Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 7th, 2023. We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Warrants have been signed. Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda?
I'll second. All in favor? Okay. Yeah, we'll table the minutes.
That brings you up to two weeks.
Huh?
That brings you up to two weeks.
That's fine.
Well, they're ready.
Okay. Jennifer, your weekly update.
All right, just a couple of things for you as we've been busy prepping for a town meeting and election. First is to let you know that we have sent two Article 43 requests over to the Road Committee, one for Langley Shore Drive and one for Lakeside Drive. So we've sent those over and they've scheduled a meeting later in the month. Renaissance Fair, you tabled last...
Once they've done their work, what happens then?
They make a recommendation. It comes back to the Board of Selectmen for a vote on the amount.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Renaissance Fair.
Renaissance Fair is going to be on your agenda next Wednesday, the 14th. They're going to come over and talk to you about their ideas for traffic control.
Okay. Have they been in touch with the sheriff?
They will be in touch with the sheriff before next Wednesday. Yeah, so they know what the concerns are and they are aware of what happened last year.
Do you think we can have them here too, or is that out of the... Is that not possible?
I mean, I think similar to how some of the other establishments hire them, we can get proof that they've hired the detail if you wanted to confirm it, but I don't think it's necessary.
Well, maybe if we were to ask them to put their plan in writing and then we could share it with the sheriff and they could look at that and make sure everything's okay.
Pretty much, what we did last week was, because Greg was here, he was telling us what he was doing, what he does, and we made a suggestion that they come to us with some sort of plan.
Yeah.
Myself, I would be happy with just... With a written plan.
Yes.
And, you know, test, test run it.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't, doesn't work out, then we go to plan, Plan B next year.
Yeah. I guess I think of the Renaissance Fair in a little different category than I do Iron Tales. I'm not aware of any significant issues there have been with Iron Tales.
Parking, no.
But Renaissance Fair had a big issue.
Oh, yeah.
And so I just want to make sure we've done, we've done everything we can do to make sure we've, we've done the proper planning, the sheriff's on board, everyone knows what's going to happen, and then it's a matter of executing.
Okay. I'll touch base with them by the first that we hear their plan and see if they're ready to come before you.
Thank you.
The only other thing that I want to talk about is town meeting and town election.
Yes.
The, it was brought to our attention today that the town warrant inadvertently tells the voters to assemble at the Acton Town Hall. This, of course, comes with the history of the last 20 years of having the election first and the town meeting after. So we always told the voters to assemble to the Acton Town Hall to come and elect their moderator. When the polls are done, then we would recess and we would go to the school afterwards. So this was a, just a clerical error that happened. I have been in touch with legal and there is a very simple solution to this, that we've already put everything in place. Essentially, what's going to happen is that we are going to elect the moderator here at the Acton Town Hall on Saturday at 9:00. The town, the elementary school will be set up as normal. Voters will be, will come in, they'll get checked in, they'll be seated. We will let them know if they choose to be included in the election moderator. They're welcome to drive over to the town hall where staff will be ready. We may run a couple of minutes late, but we'll make sure that all legal precautions and everything is met. For the last 10 town meetings that Acton has had, they've had one moderator. Essentially, he'll be here, he'll get elected moderator, and we should be at the school by 10 minutes after 9:00. It's just a mishap. We appreciate it being caught now, but we've taken all of the precautions to get it fixed and still make sure that it's a legal meeting, so there are no concerns there.
This was a situation where, at least for me, I think I spent my time looking at the details of the warrant and not the, not the header page on the warrant. So this was an error in the pot of Selectmen, had nothing to do with anyone else then. So I'm glad you were able to get this solution in place. Thank you. And I think we can move on.
Yep.
Fair enough. No harm, no foul.
And we will leave a staff member here as well for a duration of the majority of the annual town meeting, should anybody show up here to guide them down there. Mamie Nussle is very happy to hear about signs and the letters as well. Also, the posting that the constable put out says 9:00 a.m. at the elementary school. So this is the only place, and really unless you've printed it offline, the voters don't have the warrant yet, so.
Okay.
Help us spread the word, the school.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
That's all we have. Any Department Head Committee Chair updates? Okay. Liaison updates. I have nothing to report. David?
Town meeting week.
And I just wanted to note that Kim is attending her granddaughter's.
I don't know if it's grand, I think it's granddaughter.
Yeah, graduation, yes.
Graduation from high school?
Mm-hmm.
Tonight, congratulations to them, and so I'm sure she'll be back next week. Old business, Iron Tales mass gathering permit.
So in front of you, you have a copy of the actual mass gathering permit. You have the liability insurance, and we have all of the dates. So everything that he asked, that the board asked for last week is in front of you now.
So this has been discussed and fully reviewed at the last meeting of this not year?
Kim is an employee, so we asked her not to vote.
We did this last year, the same thing. We just clumped them all together because that's what we do.
Anything you want to add to this, or you all said?
I don't think so, just that we're geared down there to do this on a regular basis. This is just about, you know, the, the outdoor music after, after 5:00 p.m., primarily. There's, there's one event, well, there's a couple of events that could potentially exceed, you know, my allowed 300. And that is on the 22nd, the State for Life fundraiser, as well as during the Bike Week on the 17th, the burnout competition, praying it doesn't rain.
Mm-hmm.
Outside of that, it's all about the evening, evening music events. And, you know, my goal is to stay within the ordinance.
Thank you.
At, at the borders of the property. And I do have the equipment to monitor that.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Jennifer?
All right, we made a motion. We didn't approve the last three.
Oh, okay.
Make a motion, we approve the mass gathering permit for Iron Tales for June 10th, 16th, 17th, 20, June 24th, 10th, 16th, 17th, 24th, then July 19th, 21st, 22nd, and then August 5th, and August 26th.
Very good. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
You already signed it.
Yeah. It's already, yeah, it's been signed. Okay. Town credit card. Jennifer has been working to develop information about available credit cards. We currently have a very cumbersome debit card process today that is, I think can be streamlined significantly with the use of a credit card. Save a lot of time and effort on the part of town employees. So we've gotten summaries on three, three banks that have offered us cards. Personally, I've gone through this a number of times and done business with Chase, which is one of the three. Basically, there's no fee. There is some income that comes back to us for effectively points, if you will, that we get a credit back on. They're all very comparable. So I would recommend Chase as a, as a source for the credit card. And who will, who will they be issued to? Jennifer, just clarify that.
So, similar to the debit card, I will have one, the treasurer will have one, but in this case, we're going to have just a town of Acton, one which will be locked up in the vault and be signed out through the town administrator. So if, for example, a department head needs to go purchase something, we can go online and give it just $100 limit, you know what I mean, instead of having him pay for it, reimburse and so forth.
So you can set the limit?
Before he goes, yes.
Wonderful. That's great. That's a new feature. I didn't know they had that. Very good.
And that one's going to be just in the town of Acton's name because obviously Department Head can't use someone else's, so there'll be three. We'll work on a policy for next week to start looking at.
Very good.
So I'll make a motion to use Chase as our new credit card.
I'll, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Jennifer, for doing that. West Shore Drive culvert.
Okay, so as we know, Curtis Earthworks submitted an estimate for the culvert project in the amount of $311,000, 311,000. We did send the contract over to our legal team and also to Maureen at Ransom. They've had a chance to review it. They are happy and pleased with the proposal. We, assuming, and I'm assuming the board has reviewed it as well.
Yes.
Maureen's recommendation is that we accept it. As of today, the West Shore Drive count has $294,218 in it. One of the articles on Saturday is to move that extra ARPA money from the water system that we saved to this line. Assuming that article passes, that'll put us at 319 and change. So if it's your pleasure, we'll sign this contract contingent on Article 40 passing. And then next week, when we have a new board, we'll start talking about the special town meeting and other fees that we're going to incur and what the difference is that we'll have to come up with.
Okay.
Article 42?
Article 40 is what I have it as. You can, if you want to be clear, just say the West Shore Drive article.
Did they clarify the size of the culvert? There were, I think, an eight and 10-foot referenced in their proposal. Was, was I reading that incorrectly or...?
No, that's, that's how it read. And when, when Brad looked at that, what he said is that if you accept it, that'll allow you to start the negotiations. They're still going to have to sign the town's contract as well.
Yeah.
So by signing it, it allows him to start communicating with them and clearing up some of these differences.
Do we know what size the pipe is? Will? No, I'm sorry, Will's not here.
Will's not here.
Do we, there was some question about whether it was a eight or 10-foot pipe at some point because it's lost its shape, as I understand, so it's kind of hard to measure?
Not my area.
No, I, I just want to make sure that we, that we're clear about a replacement in kind.
No, it's got to be the same.
And it's got to be the exact same thing that we're pulling out and...
I mean, you could award it with a stipulation as well, but...
On the other set of plans from Ransom, it shows the exact size it's supposed to be going back in, which I thought was a 10-foot.
That's what I recalled. Yeah.
So structural, so installation and completion of structural fill surrounding culvert, 18-inch base, gravelled.
There were...
All right, well, it says excavate and remove existing eight-foot CMP pole. Is that what you saw right here?
Yeah.
Retaining walls in 10-foot pole, sorry.
And then there were two other references to a 10-foot culvert, all on the same page, on the front page. Okay, so long as they're clear, it's a 10-foot pipe.
Will, and just make your motion contingent that it matches the RFP and that we're able to work out the agreements and get our contract signed by them.
Okay.
I make a motion that we sign the contract for Curtis Earthworks for 311,000 contingent to the plans from Ransom. And the vote of Article 40.
I'll second. Any comment, question? Joyce?
I'm just curious, the gentleman that got the bid that was open last week, is this, if someone asked me and I couldn't answer it, is this a bonded company who'll be doing the work?
Well, we're not, we didn't ask for the bond. We would have to ask for the bond.
Their, their submission, though, indicated the, the general condition or terms of a bond, did they not?
Yes, they did.
It did. It's in, it's in the document.
And the bond, the bid bond is in here.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's been reviewed by council.
Good.
And we're going to make sure that, that the terms in the RFP are, which basically require them to perform the work.
Right.
Consistent with federal state regulations, that they are responsible for, for adhering to those financially.
Right.
And so all of that's been reviewed by council and the engineering firm. And when we go to actually sign the contract, we'll double check all of that and make sure. Okay?
And thank you, yeah, then I can answer my neighbors.
Yes.
And the other thing was, we're going to run into a cost for using somebody else's property?
Yeah.
We're going to talk about that soon.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Very good. Any other comment, questions? Take a vote, all in favor?
All right.
Pass it.
So just to get this ball moving, I'll have you go ahead and sign this contract.
Okay.
And then, based on David's vote, it'll be contingent on all that. So while you're signing that, just to...
Is this accepted by?
Yep.
So David and I will both sign this?
Correct. So assuming Article 40 passes and we pay out the 311,000, that's going to leave us with about $8,700 in that account. We are, we do have an agreement that we're working on with council with the property owners. They did request $3,000 a week, which, as previously noted, we've budgeted on no more than seven weeks, which, you know, which basically took us from Labor Day to Columbus Day. We know it'll be shorter, but we'd rather budget a little more. And we're also looking at the excavation work estimate that we got from Will Langley. But give or take, we're going to probably be right around $80,000 at a special town meeting to get this project through. The plan is, let's get through Saturday, let's get through Tuesday. It'll be on next Wednesday's agenda to tie down some of the numbers. Mr. Roy and Mr. Kittredge also signed the agreement that your attorney drafted, so we'll be ready to sign that next week as well.
There is still more work to be done to determine what that, the required work associated with bringing that road up to a standard to be used for a temporary period. The Selectmen will probably at a future date have an onsite visit to sort of clarify exactly what the scope of that work will be done. We'll do that with the road agent, of course, and, and the property owners. So that will sort of clarify the scope and we'll find out at that point what that number will be, and then we'll have a special town meeting and hopefully get it approved. I don't think there's anything else with that.
Those are just estimates, yeah.
Okay. Any question, comment before we move on from that item? Okay. Investments. As you know, we have adopted an investment policy. We have also gotten an approval from, from residents to move forward with implementing that investment policy. I've talked about that I've gone to a couple of locations, in particular Fidelity and TD Bank. My recommendation was TD Bank and we did take a vote on that. So now we're at the point where we can pull the trigger and actually put some money into investments. I think we're going to, ultimately, once the new accounting firm gets in, they will be developing a cash forecast for us. And that will be the basis for determining how much we invest for how long, whether it's one month, two months, three months, et cetera, to make sure that we have ample cash on hand to pay our bills. Until they get up and running, and that may be late fall, we're going to go slow on this. We currently have, as of April, about $6 million in cash. Based upon what we did in the last two months of last year, my estimate is we'll end up with about $5 million as of June 30. My recommendation is to invest $3 million in treasury bills with maturities not to exceed 90 days. So there'll be probably a million with 30 days, a million with 60, and a million with 90. And then we'll just keep rolling that over. That will leave us $2 million, which a million of that I would put in to a, call it a money market fund. It is really a treasury bill variable rate note fund, which means interest rates get reset every week, and it's in a fund that acts like a mutual fund. You get daily access to it. So there'll be a million dollars that will be accessible by us on demand. We could get access to it into our account within, let's say, 48 hours. So, and then the other remaining balance would be retained by our current corresponding bank, which is Partners Bank. And so the, the treasuries are currently earning something a little better than 5%. The Treasury variable rate money market fund is probably a little bit under 5%. And the last I heard, Partners was something around 2.5%. So that will take us for the next couple of months, and we'll monitor cash balances. And as we need money, if we do, we will draw it out of first, that, that variable rate note treasury money market account. And we'll have these others kind of maturing every 30 days, so I think we'll be in a fine position. So that's my recommendation.
Yep.
So I would make a motion to invest funds in accordance with what I've just described here.
So the amounts?
The amounts will be $3 million will be given to TD Bank to invest in treasury bills with not to exceed 90-day maturity. And I will do 30, 60, 90-day notes, a million in each. A million dollars in a treasury variable rate money market account, and the remaining will just stay where it is.
A total of 4 million, yeah.
About a million.
About a million. So I think we'll, I, I, I know that we'll be fine with this.
But like you said, you can pull out the money market anytime.
I hope when we get a accurate cash forecast, I think we'll be able to sharpen the pencil on this and, you know, be a little, be able to put more into one of these two investment funds, but for right now, I think it's a great start.
Did you make the motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
So Tom, you'll assist me with that paperwork and we'll get it going?
Yes, I'll, I'll take a look at this and I'll get back to you tomorrow with this, okay? That, that work?
Yeah, perfect. Can I just have the other page of Curtis before we go too far?
Sorry.
Oh, all right.
Sometimes I don't get it back.
We've signed it.
Just in date it.
Yeah, you just put the date and things in there. Okay. Open audit bids. As you know, we did an RFP. We sent it to four or five firms. We got a correspondence from one firm, Stephen Hopkins, I believe is the name of the firm out of Saco. This is someone that I reached out to, and they declined to bid formally. And the reason is that they would not be doing the audit for the school. And the way it works is the school has historically had their own audit done. RH Smith has been engaged to do that, RH R. Smith, I should say, and they've been engaged to do that audit. And then the town had used RH R. Smith to perform an audit, a consolidated audit, which included both the school and the town. Mr. Hopkins didn't feel comfortable in doing, in taking the audit done by another firm, in this case RH R. Smith, and incorporating it in his audit and rendering an opinion on that. He felt uncomfortable with that. So he said, if you, I'm going to decline to bid this year, but if you decide at a future date that you would like to put both of those audits out for bid, he'd be more than happy to, to bid on that. I suspect that may have been a factor with the, the two or three other firms that we did not hear from, at least I haven't. Have you heard from any?
No, I, I think you're right. No, I haven't. But I think that it's important to note that, I mean, the school did not realize we were going out to, going out to bid, and they signed an engagement.
This was fine. They, they did just fine.
In case everybody's wondering why the school...
This was not an issue or anything the school did that was, you know, in any way harmful. They did what they would always do and thought would be appropriate, and I don't have an issue with that. So at this stage...
So we've got a bid from RH R. Smith, correct?
We do, thank you. We, we did get a, a letter, an engagement letter from RH R. Smith offering to, to do the audit this year for the town. They've already been engaged to do the school's audit by the school. So we're going to, I'd like to recommend we accept that engagement because I don't think, I think that's the only firm that is capable of doing the audit at this time.
And seeing they're already doing the school.
They're doing the school, so...
Are we going to talk to them about the timeline first, or are you just...
No, I would, I would just sign...
I think, you know, I think with, with Talbert coming in.
Okay.
With everything that's going on right now, I feel comfortable and, and, you know, we'll talk to them.
Yeah.
And I, I feel we'll be in better shoes this year.
Yeah.
They've done us well for a long, long time. Last year was a couple hiccups.
Yeah.
But I think it'll be a smoother transition.
So we'll sign the audit engagement letter? We can do that tonight?
There are, yeah, two places to sign.
Okay, so let's do that. We'll have the auditor wrapped up at that point. We can deliver that to RH R. Smith tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So it's $10,000.
From my understanding of contract law, once they make an offer and we accept it, we have a contract, so are there two pages?
There's two different, yeah, I only gave you the last page because you've already gotten all this via email, so I just gave you the pages to sign.
All right, so this letter correctly sets forth, so signing both locations?
Yes, yep. One is the agreement and one is the confirmation of the audit engagement administration fees.
Okay.
We're going to make a motion on this, right?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we engage RH R. Smith to perform the audit for the town. The fee on that was...
$10,000.
$10,000, so between the school and, and the, and the town, a total of $14,000 for the audit. So I'll make a motion we engage them consistent with their offer.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. There you go.
And Tom, I printed this off for you. I don't know if I sent it or not, but this was the RH R. Smith's report of their quality control from their peer review. This is the company that investigated them.
I'm sure it was, it was all clean?
Yeah, I just thought you would like to see it.
Good, thank you. David, do you want a copy of this, or you all said?
It's the peer review.
Peer review that RH R. Smith did. Basically, it said everything was fine, so that's what they typically say. So there you go.
Thank you.
It's something they're required to do. Okay. Open paving bids.
All right, so this was sent to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 places in addition to the advertisements that we do. We got two. First one that came in was Dayton Sand and Gravel.
What's the scope of this bid?
Per ton pavement.
So we asked for per ton laid, handwork per ton, curbing per ton, and reclaiming per square foot. All right, so Dayton Sand and Gravel, per ton $99, handwork 165 per ton, curbing $300 per ton, and reclaiming 45 cents per ton. Second one we got was from Carroll Materials, Allstate.
Here's a question about that. That, was it the paving was 99?
$99 per ton.
Yet the reclaiming was 45 cents per ton. What is that?
What's a per, is it square foot or is it a...
It says per square foot.
Per square foot, so, so you take your road, take a mile, so many square feet in that mile, that's, that's what, that's how they do it.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
So Carroll Materials, per ton laid was 85.50, 85.90, I'm sorry, 85.90. Handwork is 185, curbing is $300 per ton, and the reclaiming per square foot is 30[1667.72] reclaiming per square foot is thirty cents. So, per ton goes from ninety-nine versus eighty-five ninety.
Yeah.
Handwork, um, the difference of twenty dollars. Curbings was the same, and the reclaiming's the difference of fifteen cents, so...
Well, the big, the big number we should be looking at is the per ton.
Is the per ton. So we'll, um, get copies of these to both road commissioners, let them take a look at it and make a recommendation next week.
I spoke to Will today.
Brother, you wouldn't know what we opened.
Well, I spoke to Will and he goes, if I wanna make a decision tonight, I can. And with the numbers, I mean, it only makes sense to go with Carroll.
I'm sorry, didn't you say there were three bids?
No, two.
Two.
Oh, okay.
And Carroll's done our work in the past, and would, you know, love to keep them.
Yeah, there's, there's a huge discrepancy in price here. So, I mean, if it was a two or three dollar...
All the difference, it'd be one thing.
And, um, I myself, uh, I'll take the recommendation, 'cause I would make the recommendation myself anyways.
Yeah.
'Cause I wouldn't do it.
I'm just following past practice was, but do whatever you want.
Yeah. He should be here, though, 'cause he knows that this is being opened tonight, so...
Yep. No, he got tied up.
Yep. You wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We take, uh, a bid from Carroll Materials for eighty-five ninety a ton.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Great.
And we don't want the individual from Carroll's, you know...
Oh, is this...
He's here, so we...
I'm, oh, okay.
Waits to drive down here, so...
Oh, all right.
Uh, my name's Charlie Anderson. I, I am with Carroll Materials. Uh, it was a pleasure to work for you guys last year. Thank you again for choosing us. Uh, I'll be in touch with both road commissioners. Uh, the only thing I would need from you guys in sometime in the near future, doesn't have to be right off, but just a, a simple email, just stating that you've awarded to us, and I can start the process of getting the job, uh, built inside, 'cause we have an internal process we have to go through to build the job for our auditing, you know, the numbers, people. So, and I'm sure you understand what I'm saying in the numbers.
Yeah, I'll get it too. Absolutely.
Yep, thank you so much, and thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
We'll do a good job for you.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts. God, he looks like, he looks like Dr. Clark.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I forget his first name.
Um, yeah, his wife's name starts with an H.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that, I was, I didn't know who that was. Okay, Lincoln license, Acton Fair.
So you have the original?
Uh, do I?
You did.
Um... Okay. Yes, I do.
Cue. Uh, so this is for Bingo, Bino. This is for their three-day event, um, during the fair, oh, four-day, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, you have all the information in front of you. They didn't, there's no concerns from last year that anybody's made us aware of.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't say it's just for Bino. They have an actual beer tent now. Sorry, I think I spoke, I misspoke. I think you can do both, but it's a beer tent.
So you didn't need a license for the bingo?
Uh, no, you need a license for the beer.
Oh, okay. All right.
I just picture people playing Bino and drinking, so I tie them together.
I was wondering what the association was there.
Well, the tents are right next to each other. It just, they blend, they blend together after a couple beers, playing Bino before you know it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, alcohol license to Cheers To You Inc., the Acton Fairgrounds, for the date of August twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh.
Uh, I'll second. Any comment? All in favor? Okay. We can sign that. We're on a roll.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Animal welfare contract.
So, yearly contract with, uh, animal welfare. You also have the original, Tom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you've turned to page two or three, it'll say the quota and the, the capital and the, their per-person quota. It did not change. I compared it to last year. It's the exact same contract. This essentially allows the animal control officer to take animals down there.
To the kennel.
Yeah, to the kennel bunk.
I'm sorry, you're saying these, these...
Fees have not changed.
These have not changed.
The exact same.
How long have they been like this?
They haven't changed in quite a few years.
Oh, good for them. God, love them.
And we don't utilize them. I mean...
Do we need to sign two copies?
Yes. They like an original and they want, you'd have an original.
To sign the contract with the Animal Welfare Society.
I'll second. Any comment? All in favor? Okay. By the way, that contract amount, I, I, I'm not sure if you said it, but it's three thousand eight hundred and one dollars now.
Yeah, I, I, I did, I did not say that, but thank you.
No, that's okay. Okay. Norstar.
So this contract, um, the code officer asked me to present it to you. Uh, this is the letter of agreement for planning services with the town of Acton. There are some changes in their compensation that we wanna go over. Uh, first, just to let you know that they have added a senior planner at a hundred and forty dollars an hour. Their principal planner, uh, has gone up twenty dollars an hour.
To what?
Uh, one fifty.
One fifty?
Their planner and their associate planner have ten-dollar increases, bringing them to ninety-five and a hundred and fifteen.